Where's Taylor? Where's the, where's Taylor Williams? Is he sick or something? Okay, okay. Oh, yes, you do. Yeah. I hope Pam's okay. I'd send her a card, so, uh, think about it, mom, so.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our January two thousand eighteen regular school board meeting for the month of January and call the meeting to order. Do we have a certification from the board to come out of closed session and certify our closed session meeting?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date, pursue it to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Hall Leonard. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the certification motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Uh, do we have any motions from closed session? I believe we have a personnel agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda as presented?
I make a motion we accept the personnel agenda as presented in the closed session.
We have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. That motion carries. Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Good evening. I'm gonna introduce Misha Bullock, our eighth grade student at JP King. I'm gonna let her tell, she's got a little bit of good news to tell you, but let her tell a little bit about herself to you all.
Hello. My name is Misha Bullock. I'm a star student, I could say, at JP King. Had a huge turnaround since being there. Recently, I auditioned for the governor's school in Norfolk, and they called me back, I think it was two days ago, and said that I could come back again, and I auditioned for musical theater, and so, we're gonna see what happens this Saturday, and hopefully I'll get in.
Okay. Say it across your heart, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good luck Saturday, Misha.
Thank you.
Uh, let's have a roll call.
Rebecca Jester.
Present.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Hall Leonard.
Present.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Jessica Grant. Robert Holt.
Present.
Ron Rusnak.
Present.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. We have no one signed up for citizens' time. Let's move to our consent agenda, and we have several minutes to review, I believe two. We have a meeting on December the fourteenth, and another one in January.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes for December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes for December fourteenth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Now, January the eleventh.
Mr. Chairman, if we could back up to the beginning, to the members present. Members present, uh, it states Amy Phillips, Rebecca Jester, Andrea Hall Leonard, Robert Holt, Ron Rusnak. And when you go down further into the reports, Mrs. Grant is mentioned, so I believe her name was omitted by accident. Am I correct?
She was not there. I don't believe.
Go down further. She was. Go down further under, keep moving.
Oh, I see.
Right there. See where the motion was made, under Division Financial Report. Voting for was Phillips, Jester, Hall Leonard, Grant, Holt, Rusnak.
Right.
Yes. So I would like to make a motion to approve the school board work session minutes with the correction adding Ms. Jessica Grant present for January the eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hall Leonard, for catching that. Reporters superintendent, Ms. Sterling.
Thank you so much, Chairman Holt. I'd like to start the, um, my superintendent's report off with our student liaison report.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, tonight we'll begin with Franklin High Academics. We started SOL testing on Wednesday, and we have tested all the way through February first, while looking forward to great results. The snowy weather has caused all kids a rescheduling of events at FHS such as sports, clubs, and SOL testing. We had a senior meeting on January twelfth, and the Hirth Jones representative talked to the senior class about captain gowns, invitations, and rings. Mr. Phelps and Ms. Massenberry also talked about our graduation date, which is June fifteenth, scholarship deadlines, and college application deadlines. We'll meet again in February. We have SOL Academy on January thirteenth, and we have two more on January twentieth and the twenty seventh. FHS will have its second blood drive, which was sponsored by our JR, JROTC department, on Wednesday, January twenty fourth, in Franklin High's jump. Our main focus is finishing first semester successfully on February first. Second semester will, with new classes, will begin on February second. For athletics, our varsity boys basketball team is currently eleven and four. Our JV boys are seven and two, and our varsity girls are currently standing at four and seven. We play at home tomorrow versus seven. Our JV game starts at four thirty. Wrestling is having a strong year. Last weekend, we hosted a Matt Bryan Memorial Duel Tournament. Eleven schools participated, and our wrestling team won the school and finished second behind Deep Creek. Wrestling also expects us sending a lot of wrestlers to states and regionals. We have a tournament Saturday at Northumberland. Our Scholastic Bowl team finished second in the district for regular season with a record of eight and four. Our cheer, our cheerleaders have been doing a great, have been doing great support in the winter teams this season. Now at JP King for the academics. Between winter vacation and snowy days, JP King is busy reviewing for upcoming benchmarks. Their benchmarks began on January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, and continued through January twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Parents and Partners was postponed until this Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. It will, it will be a reading fun night for everyone. For SP Morton and their academics, SP Morton will have eat and read on Wednesdays. They will host the SOL Winter Carnival on January twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, from five to six thirty P.M. SP Morton will begin their benchmarks on January twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. They will also have Donuts for Dads on January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, seven thirty to eight fifteen A.M. There will be a Dairy Queen Night on February first, and Girl Scouts kickoff will be on February eighth, two thousand eighteen, at six P.M. at SP Morton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and at this time, Mr. Holt will be leading us to attend a basketball dinner, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just does it all. All right. Next, we'll move on to Ms. Wade.
Good evening, Chairman Holt, Vice Chair, Dr. Hall Leonard, school board members, Ms. Sterling, and Franklin community. First of all, I'd like to begin with good news, and, um, begin with the Best Teacher Attendance Award. This is given each month to the school who has the highest percentage of teacher attendance in the previous month. So this month, we will be recognizing the attendance for December two thousand seventeen. And this month, with a percentage of ninety-five point four percent teacher attendance, congratulations to Franklin High School. Next, um, our Best Student Attendance Award, and again, this will be for the December two thousand seventeen, that month. Ninety-nine point zero four percent student attendance in the month of December. Congratulations, big congratulations, to JP King Middle School.
Ninety-nine percent is phenomenal.
That's amazing. It really is.
That's amazing.
Next, the Bronco Pride Clean School Award, that's given monthly to the school who is, uh, rated based on an inspection report and, and, um, the percent, um, that's the highest. This is for the month of January two thousand eighteen, and I'm proud to recognize JP King Middle School. Mr. Tremaine Boone, custodian at JP King, is with us tonight. Also custodians there, Mr. Quincy Boone and Ms. Cynthia Files. All right. He's ready for the big one. Okay, have one more bit of good news tonight. The week of January the twenty-second through twenty-sixth has been designated as Virginia Schools Principals Appreciation Week. So I'd like to read the following proclamation from our governor. Whereas principals make a significant difference for students and staff every day, impacting the effectiveness of teachers and the achievement of students. And whereas principals serve as educational leaders who motivate and inspire all members of the school staff and student body to engage in the learning process. And whereas principals are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school. And whereas principals work with teachers and staff to set academic standards and push students to excel. And whereas principals must work collaboratively with parents and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. And whereas it is the responsibility of the Commonwealth of Virginia to continue to support and recognize the efforts of school principals who are positively impacting students, who are the future of Virginia. And whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work and dedication of Virginia school principals in promoting quality education for every child. Now therefore, I Ralph S. Northram do hereby recognize January the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. So we thought that it was, um, more than fitting for us to call that to the attention of Franklin City, to our Franklin City School Board, our Franklin City community tonight, and recognize our three principals for the hard work that they, um, and commitment that they have for our schools. And I'd like to ask them to come forward, and Ms. Sterling, we'd like to recognize you. Ms. Sterling, Ms. Sterling will be presenting, um, certificates to them, and they read Certificate of Achievement. This acknowledged, acknowledges that the principal has been recognized for his hard work and dedication in promoting quality education for students in Franklin City Public Schools, January twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. I want you to present those.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with each and every principal, and I just wanna make certain that we honor you because you do so, come on up, I can't see. You do so much. I feel like we're always in meetings, but this gives us the opportunity to tell you just how much we appreciate you. So the first one, who always gives our certificates for graduation and shakes hands, and now it's his turn, is Mr. Travis Phelps.
Next, come on up, Ms. Frances. Well, again, we appreciate you and thank you for everything that you do. Now let's scoot over a little bit, because you don't want this to block us. There. And last but definitely not least, thank you, Dr. Sherry Davis, for all that you do. Congratulations for your nice principal. Thank you again.
We all know how valuable those three are to us, and I'm glad other people recognize that too. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on into the Human Resources Monthly Report. You have before you the results of a survey that was, um, distributed out to our teachers in December. This survey was for all first, second, and third-year teachers, and it was for the purpose of gaining information from them and some feedback from them about their orientation, about the support that they are receiving, that they have received, about the professional development that they have participated in, and how, um, important and meaningful that's been to them. Suggestions of how we can improve, um, because, you know, we, um, we are very serious about recruitment, but we're even more serious about retention, and so that was an effort to gather information. Um, so I've shared the results of those. It was ten questions. We were quite pleased with the responses. The very last question asked them to, um, feel free to share comments about suggestions that they would like to make that would, um, help support teachers or, um, promote teachers' satisfaction and teacher retention. And so, a few of those, um, shared comments, and I believe you have those in your packet as well. What teacher appreciation, first, excuse me, Principal Appreciation Week, I'd like to bring your attention to number nine, and this is a testament to the principals that we have in our division, when it says, "I feel that I am supported by my school administrators." And if you see that green, it is just right out there in the forefront, strongly agree. So again, that's, that's information that the principals can utilize as well on their own campuses. So thank you again for all that you do, because our, uh, new teachers feel supported. Absolutely, and how important that is. Okay, next I'd like to go over the, um, changes in our two thousand seventeen eighteen school calendar. As you know, we have missed seven school days, um, due to inclement weather. And so first semester, um, was reduced, and we felt the need to make some adjustments in our calendar in order to provide for more instructional time in the, in the first semester for those first semester students, particularly at Franklin High School who were taking their end-of-year SOL in that course. So, um, you'll see the following changes have taken place. We changed January the sixteenth from a half-day to a full day. We changed January twenty-fifth from a half-day to a full day. January twenty-sixth from a half-day to a full day. January twenty-ninth from a teacher work day to a full student day. January thirtieth from a half-day to a full student day for JP King and SP Morton. This will remain a half-day for, or excuse me, an early release day for Franklin High School so that they can, um, conduct their senior research presentations. January thirty-first changes from a full student day to a half-day for students. February first changes from a full student day to a half-day for students. And then February second will actually be the first day of our second semester. So we shifted the end of the semester down, which, you know, allowed Mr. Phelps and the high school to adjust their testing and provide more instructional days in there and hours in there for our students to prepare. These adjustments that were made increased our first semester by approximately two, two whole days. That still leaves us with seventeen days of bank time that's built into our instructional hours in the year. Since this was approved, we have missed two additional days of inclement weather. So, taking that into account, we still have fifteen days of bank time. Okay. I believe next on the agenda is Operations Update, and I will move right on into that if I may. Uh, Mr. Whiting is, um, not with us tonight. He's been out sick this week. So, um, I'll be standing in tonight. He has provided you with the information and updates from Transportation Department. As far as buses, there were twenty repairs. There have been twenty-five hundred mile inspections on three of our buses, and one of our buses has been serviced. Maintenance on the buses, five of them have had repairs, one has been serviced. And our support vehicles, that's the vehicles, um, like our cars, um, vans, things like that, that are in our fleet that don't transport students, um, necessarily. Two have been serviced and two have been repaired. An update from the cafeteria. In December two thousand seventeen, there were nine thousand one hundred and eighty-three breakfasts served, and there were nine thousand and twenty lunches served. And that concludes the report. Okay. Thank you so much. That concludes the report from HR and touching on operations as well. Ms. Pam Kindred unfortunately cannot be with us this evening, so I'm going to go over the financial updates. There are some areas that I would need the board to review and approve possibly, that supports the instruction at each school. So let's go through the first one. In the spirit of transparency, anything over ten thousand dollars, we will always bring to the board to review and approve. So we have the program Achieve Three Thousand. That has been in our school since last year. Year before last, it is now twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, if you would review that. This is the purchase order, and this is for SP Morton.
I think my question is, um, Superintendent Sterling.
Yes.
Is the date of August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, right at the top? And this is a purchase order, so did, was the purchase order generated in August?
The purchase order was generated in August, and this works with our Title One fundings. Do I have? And I would definitely have Ms. Kelly Conaway come up, and she can explain this in greater detail. And she'll go through the approval process for you. Thank you.
Good evening, board. The purchase order was, uh, written in August, at the start of our school year. And because it's requiring Title One funds, which we did not have enough Title One funds from my previous grant, so we was waiting on our seventeen eighteen funds to be approved. So once we wrote the grant, we wrote in the Achieve Three Thousand, and you're gonna see some other purchase orders in the same situation. And so once we got our final approval, which was, I think, maybe October, late October, November, that's when our final approval was set. So once we did that, we had to send it to, to the Virginia Department of Education for approval, and then we receive approval from the Virginia Department of Education, and then we're here with, at you, asking you for your approval. So, it really, we were waiting on our final approval of our two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Title One funds.
Then my next question is, in the little box, um, to the right at the bottom, that says Received By that says "Received By," there's a dollar sign there.
That's because we ran out of space where it says the object code. If you look at all the object codes, you see 12-2-1. That's the first object code. You see 2,650. So since we're using three object codes, so the finance department know what account to take the money from, so we broke up the total figure of $21,550 into the three different amounts, so the finance department know where to take the money from. So we won't go over budget.
All right, go right under that.
Okay.
Right under the signature. It says the 112-18. That's what that is under there as well?
112-18.
Right under the date.
Oh, no, 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 no. I can explain that, the 112-18.
You're right under that.
Yes, every time I sign a purchase order, I always date when I sign it. So the 112-
But right under that, I'm referring to the dollar amount under that.
Right.
Received By.
The $18,300 will come from the 12-2-5-61105-3000.
That's going over.
Account code.
That's going over.
Right, right, because I write too big.
I'm with you. Okay. Thank you for clarity. Yeah, I was trying to follow it, okay.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve purchase order 18-101?
I make a motion to approve the purchase order number 18-101.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Mr. O'Leary, please, you can continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next, we have the same purchase order for J.P. King Jr. As $19,975, Achieve 3,000.
Are we keeping data in reference to the effectiveness of the program?
Oh, absolutely. And we'll be bringing that to you at the end of the semester. We pull usage reports. We look at how the usage reports affect the benchmark examinations. And it's a lot of asset mapping because if it's not being utilized, then we phase that out. We don't repurchase it. We try to work with our student, our teachers, excuse me. So that is something that we're definitely going to bring to the board, and we will show you that what we spend, there is a correlation to student achievement.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve purchase order number 18-102?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve purchase order 18-102.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Power School Analytics for S.P. Morton and J.P. King. This is our benchmark assessment software that we are asking for the approval in the amount of $13,213.20. Also coming from Title I.
Is this just for the assessment analytics side of it, or is it for the whole?
Just for the assessment for four subjects.
I make a motion we approve purchase order number 18-251.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
What are the four subjects, did you tell us?
English, math, social studies, and science.
English, math, social studies, and science. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Purchase order 18-250, Chairman Holt, is not something we have to vote on. I just provided it to the board because it was consistency and transparency with which softwares we're using at each school. So we are using Power School Analytics at Franklin High School, but because the amount was less than $10,000, we did not need a vote. But I wanted to make certain that the board was able to view that purchase order.
Thank you for that.
Can we can proceed to purchase order 18-402?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. This is for avid membership fees for all three schools. Franklin High School, J.P. King Jr. Middle School, and S.P. Morton in the amount of $10,417. As far as avid is concerned, we will need this approved. But avid will be doing a presentation, excuse me, of how that program is doing in our schools in February. And that also was taken from Title II and Title V.
Is this an increase from the fees from last year? Do we know? Do we do a comparison? I'm just curious.
Please, Mr. Edwards, who is over our avid.
Good evening to the board.
Good evening.
Chairman Holt, Vice Chairman, Dr. Holland, and to the Franklin City School Board and Community. Dr. Holland, to answer that question, it's a decrease because we have passed the stage. We have libraries in our school, so on average, it will generally be no more than $11,000. And it came in at $10,417 to support the membership, and that's for all three schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Decrease.
Thank you.
I know we're going to get a report next month, but my sense is that's an excellent program. Is that still the case?
Students are thriving, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the purchase order 18-402.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman Holt. That concludes the financial portion of my report. And I'd like to move into curriculum and instruction. That will be presented by Mr. Edwards.
Under curriculum and instruction today, we are, as you know, full throttle at the high school with SOL testing. And we're in full throttle at the middle school and the elementary school with benchmarks. And so we will have the full report out of how we're doing on benchmarks and SOL testing up to this point at our first work session in February. And we'll bring that data to the board for thorough review. And we have, under the depart, under this item, we have several field trips for board approval. The first field trip is for the Riverheads High School. The Riverheads High School, and it's for February 9th through February 10th. And this is for our wrestling team. And this is a regional tournament.
Thank you for providing the chaperone list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Do we have a motion to approve the wrestling team field trip, February 9th and 10th?
Mr. Chairman? I make a motion that we approve the wrestling team field trip for February 9th and February 10th.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the wrestling field trip signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Our second field trip also relates to wrestling, and it's from February 15th through February 17th. And this regional meet is in Salem, Virginia, at the Salem Civic Center.
I make a motion, we approve the field trip for the wrestling team from February 15th through the 17th to the Salem Civic Center.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you. And our last field trip, I'd like to present to the board for your consideration for approval, is from March 9th through March 11th. It's a deep-run high school in Glen Allen, Virginia, and this is for our robotics team.
We have a motion to approve the robotics trip, March 9th through 11th.
I make a motion to approve the FHS Robotics Competition in Glen Allen on March 9th through the 11th, 2018.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. And a question and a comment. I want to say thank you for providing the funding source. Because I was looking for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, where's the money coming from?
Yes, ma'am.
For all of these. The funding source is provided. So my question is, on some of these, I notice, for some of the field trips, school funds is selected. And then on some, I think it says athletics is selected. So when it says school funds, I guess I'm asking, what school funds? I'm asking for the specifics.
Okay. I'm so glad we have our high school principal be here because they will select what budget item that happens at their school. Can you please identify? Yes, please, thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Good evening, Board. The Franklin High School checking account has sub-accounts within the overall account. And if you see athletics check, that means it's coming from that sub-account of our overall checking account, which, you know, supports our athletic program. And then one of them says robotics because we have a grant from Franklin Southampton Charities and I believe also the Camp Foundation that supports robotics. So we keep that money separate from athletics. It's all in our checking account, but, you know, we have sub-accounts broken up for the different programs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I proceed?
Yes.
Excellent.
Please.
Next, you'll have the Principal's Monthly Report that we provide. And next is the Professional Development Log from December 15th to January 18th. Very small, as for the snow days, but our professional development that Central Office has conducted is provided for your review for attendance.
Superintendent Sterling, I do see Professional Development Log. But right before that is the Principal's Report.
Yes.
Did we review that, or was this?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have the Principal's Reports, the ADM tracking the way you open?
Yes. For each grade level, I guess.
What was that?
For each school, for grade levels. I said grade level. Elementary and secondary. Okay. We also have submitted the MOU updates for your review that we are required to provide each month. And after the MOU, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Dr. Geiger, thank you for being here. Do you have any comments on our MOU?
The only thing is, I know you all have spoken about alignment, and we've talked about that. We talked about it at that last meeting. And one of the things that I've done is to talk to both the superintendent and assistant superintendent. I do this every time I come here and talk about their walkthroughs and their work with principals on making sure lessons are aligned. It's one of the areas that lots of divisions can improve on, and I think the staff knows that that's an area that they want to work on as well. And they're putting, they've been putting things in place even recently in terms of what the superintendent's doing and what her staff is doing in terms of meeting with the principals on an individual basis and a collective basis on PLCs. But one of the things that I think is important is that principals also are responsible for looking at lessons. They are turned in on Thursdays, and correct me if I'm wrong, and then reviewed. And the goal is to have, if the lesson's going to be taught on Monday, if there are changes because the lesson is not aligned, that gives the principals not a lot of time, but some time to make sure that by going on and looking at what's available through the DOE website in terms of alignment, that those lessons are aligned. So that's the first part of it. The second part of that is not just, is the lesson aligned, but then being in classrooms, monitoring the implementation of that lesson to make sure it's being taught the way it's supposed to be taught, and then providing feedback to teachers on that. So I know the staff's working hard on that. That's a major initiative. It's seen a lot of attention from the superintendent since she's been here, and hopefully, time will tell. But that's, those are processes that have been put in place that if they're faithful and implemented the right way, are, I think, on track. Is that?
That sums it up, yes.
I mean, that's what they're telling me, and that's what they're working on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to ask a question. The format that we currently receive for the MOU updates is the format that we have been receiving for some time now, even before Superintendent Sterling came aboard. But I think what would be helpful, this is my suggestion to the Board, is, and to the superintendent, recently we had the MOU review, so I think it would be helpful to keep the, we need this information, but I would like to see progress towards those areas of concerns, not just say, okay, for example, human resource management, quality, leadership, teachers and support, what we did on a particular week, but if we could have some type of rubric that shows the progress to those areas that were concerning, based on the MOU review.
That was the division review, I think, right?
The division review.
The division review?
Right.
Okay.
You mean highlight that in some way, correct?
Well, when we received the division review, so I'll make sure I'm using the right term too, the revision review directly reflects what's in the MOU. Did it not?
No, not necessarily. It looked at systems and how we worked overall as a division, but I do understand what you're asking me, because our-
Is it tied in any way to the MOU? Because I thought some of it was.
Some of it was, as far as the academic piece is, but, which is true, but specifically, I do understand what you're saying, which you're asking for the current MOU to give you progress updates, the way it was written and approved, and if that is the will of the Board, then we have no problem making certain that you receive those updates.
I can just picture, the review had columns.
It did.
Okay, and then it told you, here's the area.
Yes.
This is what we believe you are doing.
Yes.
This is maybe what you should be doing, or could do better. So I'm just saying, okay, for the MOU, let's say leadership and government, okay, this is what we did this particular week, but based on the goal, what is our progress?
Okay.
For the division. I think it would be helpful to see how we're progressing.
Now, are you wanting that from a MOU standpoint, or from that division review?
I want it from a MOU standpoint.
Because that division review was so much more comprehensive and in-depth.
No, MOU. I'm looking forward for the MOU, because we want to go-
Because you're wanting to see progress out of that MOU.
I would like to see the progress, for example, key leadership and governance related, because we've been receiving these reports now, for a while, that basically states, okay, this week the superintendent visited all schools, the deputy superintendent, director, finance, I mean, we get this every time, and you all do an excellent job outlining what's being done. However, we as a Board should know the progress, okay? This month, we did the reviews, this is what we noticed, okay? We found the following things, this is what we could do better. Can we see that progress? That's all I'm saying. We'd like to see the growth.
Can you give that some thought, Ms. Sterling?
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Sterling. Dr. Hall, so we do have the tri-annual review, and that's when we get report out to Officer School Improvement on our progress toward the MOU. And this was going to come out toward the end of the meeting, so our next tri-annual review is tomorrow, beginning at eight thirty, and that's when we meet with Officer School Improvement, that will be Ms. Bear Rabel, Dr. Geiger, Dr. Fisher, and so, for example, when you look in the MOU update as it relates to the essential actions.
Yes.
So how are we doing toward improving feedback?
I'd like to know.
Toward, right.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't want to see, that's why I said, let me voice my opinion, and see if the other Board members, I just don't want two years to go.
I understand.
All right, now, it is something separate than the annual review, however, this is important. This MOU, and as a Board, we need to know, okay, what is our progress towards the essential actions? Essential action one point three, three point four, three point five. And I believe you all have that information, you see it, because you're going in the schools, you're working directly with them, but when we receive the reports, I think it would just be helpful-
Yes, ma'am.
If we could also see the progress. That's all I'm asking.
Yes, so to the Board, as you know, under our memorandum of understanding with the Department of Education, we must report out monthly, and then throughout-
Well, let me ask you, monthly, so are they receiving the same information that the Board receives?
Yes, ma'am, so-
The same format that's in here?
Yes, so the answer's yes.
Okay.
And so what we do, and when Dr. Geiger comes, our chief academic officer, and as he mentioned to you, we report out our progress, and we see Dr. Geiger weekly, and so, and again, the culmination comes in the tri-annual review, again, which takes place tomorrow. There are four essential actions in the MOU, and we start with curriculum alignment.
That's right.
We can go to human resources, then we go to purpose and direction, and then we go to leadership and governance. And the component that I think you're asking about, Dr. Hall, is, so when do we get reported on the progress, other than just the listing of what we do?
That is correct. That's what I'm asking for, Mr. Edwards.
That big review is, yes, ma'am, and that's-
Yes. I think that this is just the action steps that are being taken.
Absolutely.
And I want to see progress.
It's not a, it's not a display of where we're at, where we're growing, it's a, just a listing of action steps.
Well said, Ms. Phillips, yes. Action steps, monthly, what this division takes to meet the standards of the MOU.
And I want progress.
Yes, ma'am.
In addition to the step.
And so, the progress we'll be reporting out beginning at eight thirty AM.
Okay.
And so, we'll come back and report out to the Board.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Did I answer? Okay.
That answers my question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, and I'm glad that answers your question, because that is something that I believe that we can do, and once we calibrate with the review that we're going to do tomorrow, with the tri-annual, then we'll use that format, and we'll make certain that we update you every month in that format.
Of course, we want to get rid of the MOU entirely, so-
Yes.
Sorry, Dr. Geiger.
Got your problem.
Thank you.
Got rid of, you're two-thirds of the way there.
We are.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling. Anything else?
No, that concludes my report. Thank you.
We have no unfinished business under new business. We've already covered just about everything on that list, I believe all of it. Under important dates to remember, I'll highlight a couple of them. Our next board meeting, work session, February first at J.P. Our next regular monthly meeting is February fifteenth, here. Anything else by Board members?
I'd just like to say, we had some extremely, I'll say, cold, snowy weather, changing schedules. I think people have handled that exceptionally well. The school, you know, you have minus ten degree weather, and there weren't any frozen pipes. Somebody's doing something right. I mean, that's one thing. And now this week, what, we've got five basketball games, and, I mean, and the principals, or un-principal anyway, has been going to the games. He's got a board meeting, but, I mean, it's just a large amount of work being done, and now trying to SOL, you know, compacting, but, I mean, I just congratulate all you for your hard work. I mean, it's a lot going on, so-
It is.
Just stay focused, and thanks for all your hard work, and plus, you know, putting in those requests for trips, I think that's been a big improvement, you know, ahead of time, so, you know, we're getting a lot of things done in an orderly fashion, and, again, just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reesnack.
I concur, Mr. Reesnack. It is a lot going on. It's a lot going on. I had the opportunity this week to attend the SOL, and I believe it should be in your board packet, Mr. Moore tried to make copies for everybody, in the back of the board packet. I had the opportunity to attend the SOL Family Winter Carnival that was held on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, at S.P. Morton, and the principal was Dr. Sherry Davis. And I was so impressed with the organization of the program, how structured it was, and the agencies, and I had my sheet going around, trying to make sure that I was writing down the number of agencies, and when you came in, there was actually a map that was given to us, and the map basically says your family's schedule, so that when family members came in, they were given a map. The maps were color-coded. In attendance was four hundred and forty-nine participants. Can you imagine that many people at S.P. Morton on a Wednesday night? I was impressed. I was impressed. And I'll give you the agencies that were, and actually, Western Tidewater Smart Beginnings sponsored the event. And so if you went in the gym, that was the blue zone, all of the agencies were there, so it was also Southampton Sheriff Department, United Way, Franklin City Public Schools, Federal Programs Title One, Western Tidewater Community Service Board, S.P. Morton Elementary, PTA, they were making appeals to us. Paul D. Camp Community College, and I asked at a couple of the tables, was there anything new that was going on with the different partners? And Paul D. Camp, I believe, it was workforce, workforce readiness in some programs at the Workforce Center, and I know that can closely tie in with some of the CTE things that the principal at the high school would like to see. And so I did pick up the two thousand eighteen class catalog for the Workforce Center to give, you know, to the Board to look at, but I was impressed with that. Also, the Children's Center, when I went to the table for the Children's Center, I asked the same question. You know, I'm familiar with the Children's Center, are there any new programs, you know, that we should be aware of as a Board that we can share with others? And the program that I was not aware, I was aware that the Children's Center provides services to pregnant moms, but also it says expectant fathers. So I was impressed with that. It says pregnant moms and expectant fathers. And so I will, you know, send that information around to Board members, and also, let's see, who else did they have? Franklin, the library was there, Blackwater Regional Library, Franklin Social Services, Southeastern Virginia Health System. Now with the health system, when I talked to them, they provided information on not just being your family doctor or pediatrician for the child, but also they pointed out to me that they have dental services, so I thought that was good to know for our families that may not have coverage, and they provided that information as well. A Southeastern, and they're pretty new to our area, Southeastern Virginia Health System, so I'll pass that around. Western Tidewater Community Services Board was there, and I was really glad to see that we had so many different partnerships, because we've been talking about collaborating more with the community, especially in the areas of mental health. And so the information that was provided by Western Tidewater was very helpful, so I'll pass that along. And lastly, I'd like to point out, the Adult Education Program, they actually had applications on the table for the families to pick up for the Adult Education Program, and they were there to explain the program. Something else I did, as I went to the tables, each table, that was in another zone. All right, let's see, that was in probably, the library was the red zone. When you went in the red zone, and we talk about our partners, Catapult was there, I was glad, because I'm always asking, they were there in the red zone, and I noticed that the teachers not only had the activity, the activity may have been time, temperature, money, measurement, but they had right in the corner, the SOL. It may say two point three C, one point five A, and so that parents, and some parents did ask, what does it mean to see these numbers, and how did it correlate to what their children were doing? But it was really nice, really nice, Dr. Davis, I must say. I was impressed, I was so impressed. And, oh, they even had food. So when you finish, and in the gym, they had the bounce houses, face painting in the gym, and then when you, at any time, you could leave any of the activities and go get in line in the cafeteria and have your meal, and it was pizza, I think, and chicken, I didn't get in line for the dinner. I was just so thrilled with everything else. And when I got there, Ms. Conaway was talking, she was speaking in the cafeteria about the Title One, parts of Title Ones, making sure parents understand Title One, what it is, about the funds, and on the table, when you came in, each child could get a book. I thought that was really neat. And they had books at all levels for the children. So I would like to say congratulations to S.P. Morton on your SOL Family Winter Carnival, and I was so glad I didn't miss it. Uh-oh.
You colored it narrowly, but this is the part you would have seen. Students from Franklin High School came over and helped, they volunteered, they helped set up.
I didn't know that. That is awesome. Awesome, Franklin High School. No, I didn't know that.
You haven't noticed that?
No, don't know that.
But they were so helpful.
It was really nice.
They served food, they set up everything, they were put on.
Very organized event, very organized. And I have one more, I did two things this week. My other one is also in your board packet. I attended the VSBA Capitol Conference, and it was an enlightening experience. I learned a lot of information, and it was an opportunity for school board members to actually meet with your legislators, to learn about the House bills, we receive all the emails, but I especially enjoyed having an opportunity to speak to the legislators. VSBA did provide talking points in advance, and for me, the bills that I was most concerned about had to do with the, and that's on page two of this document here, is student discipline, and because we talk about it all the time as a division, talking points for student discipline. So I had the opportunity not only to meet our delegate Emily Brewer, the sixty-fourth District Virginia House of Delegates, had an opportunity to meet with her at the reception, and that was on Monday evening, but I also, on Tuesday, early Tuesday morning, and it was early, it was like, get up, be out, seven, eight AM, but I had an opportunity to go to the Virginia Assembly, and it was awesome, the General Assembly, and the Pocahontas Building in Richmond. And because of the weather, they even provided a shuttle, I was happy for that, and I didn't have to walk on my heels. But I wanted, I did a talk to Delegate Rosalynn Tyler in reference to House Bill two ninety-six that prohibits the suspension or expulsion of students' grades K through three, and that VSBA to support, that VSBA opposes that bill as it's currently written, and also House Bill one six zero zero that limits long-term suspension to forty-five days. And I asked that the delegates would please consider additional funding and alternative funding for our different school divisions, because I really believe that when we, anytime we have a discipline issue, there's an underlying cause to the behavior. So we really would like to see the state give us more money or more funding to create alternative programs versus having mandates. And also, as it stands right now, the school divisions are able to have their own policies in reference to suspension and certain types of behavior. And there are also some other bills that dealt with special education, but I thought it was very enlightening if you get an opportunity to attend, and I also asked Mrs. Moore to include in the pack, and I won't review all of that tonight, was two thousand eighteen VSBA legislative priorities, student discipline, and also the legislative briefing that was reviewed by Stacy Haney from Reed and Smith. Something else that was very helpful to me, to, it kind of intrigued me to want to learn more, is about the LCI, the local composite index, and how we come up with that, and how it affects school divisions in different ways. And so that's something, you know, that I now want to learn about, but it was an excellent conference.
I'm glad. I also attended that conference, and I do concur that it was excellent, but the LCI is a part of the budget retreat, and after we get started, you will be ther- I don't know why that just happened. You will be thoroughly informed on, I do apologize, I cannot believe this just happened. You will be thoroughly informed, so yes, it is a part.
That's good, because I was thinking, you know, as Board members, we probably need to have more information in ref- need to have more information in reference to the local composite index. Some of the school divisions are really being affected by that right now, they really are, so and I thought it would be helpful for us as a board, I didn't know that was coming in our retreat, but that would be, because that was an area that I definitely could use more information, but I appreciate the opportunity, and, uh, board members, if you have the opportunity, I would say definitely to attend the Capitol Conference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that extra information. Uh, I have never attended that conference, but it sounds like it's worthwhile. Any other comments? Motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second.
In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed can stay here.